Right again, alright. I'd like to call the order of public safety committee for September second, uh, six P M. Let the record show, uh, all the, all the persons that are present with the exception of Anastasia, uh, Kerry even though he's on our screen and Crawford. Uh, approval of the minutes, I'll make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, unfinished business, we have the Queen Street Railroad present pedestrian crossing lighting. Uh, Mayor?
Jim, do you have an update on that?
Um, yeah, I have a little bit more information, uh, in the update I sent, you know, I described where our approach, our hope for approach would be using two street lights, we did get some feedback directly from um, National Grid today, they're in their email, they said they're a little confused about what we're talking about, but um, they do have the right kind of lights that we were looking to use and they're willing to install them in public places. So, uh, I think I asked Dave Camp to go forward with, um, getting prices from them for installing those lights. Um, uh, hopefully it will be done and it'll all be on National Grid poles up in the air and it'll be on our tariff with the rest of our street lighting.
Call.
So, I, I read what you sent out, so thanks, James, um, I was a little unclear though, would that illuminate one hundred percent of that tunnel?
Uh, until we can get into it a little farther with, uh, National Grid, so we know exactly what the luminaries are, I, I can't answer that. That is the goal, is to get the light all the way through the tunnel.
Anyone else, Ben?
Bill, did you have any follow-up with the railroad?
On Rich and Eric.
On them paying? Cause that was part of the, their proposed plan, so they, you know, took away City Street, it was their proposed plan for illuminated tunnel, so.
I haven't had. Have you run?
I haven't heard anything from railroad. We, I haven't been contacting them about it, we just we did, uh, review the plans for the project, and there's no internal lighting in the plans. So.
So, we don't have any documentation that states that there was going to be lighting inside of that tunnel?
Uh, that I can't say, I mean, I haven't dug that deep in the files, but I can go look for that.
Maybe all the reference, I would add to that newspaper article where they gave a presentation that discussed an illuminated tunnel. Correct, Bill?
Yes, like I, like I told you last time, uh, committee or council, um, our information was that at the D P W director at the time, prior to going to bidding, uh, signed off on it, so it wasn't, wasn't needed.
Any other questions on this? Uh, so, or the council, I'd like to move forward with this, we're just gonna wait for the, uh, to get the information on the costs and whether or not National Grid can connect this lighting?
We'd like to have the railroad approach to go, I mean, they saved the money that they had with to replace that overpass, which saved them money by putting that in, then they were gonna reallocate those funds for down the track, so it's not like the funds aren't there, I don't know why Bernard, whoever would've said it wasn't needed when it was presented to be it, I don't know why anybody that write mine would think that a dark tunnel of that length is is good for public safety.
It wasn't.
It wasn't bad. I said Bernard, whoever.
But I guess regardless of how we end that conversation, we need the cost, right? So, we can go as far forward as trying to get the cost hammered out with National Grid and we can hammer out the actual quota metrics to um, see whether this approach will light one hundred percent of the tunnel.
Mayor, is there some way that if we do have documentation on that, even though there was an error on the sign-off, that we could uh, do the work and then maybe put that cost on the railroad company?
Uh, I, I can't answer that right now.
Okay.
We have to get more into that with the railroad, see if they'd be willing to, to cover the cost.
Okay. So, right now, we're just waiting on the cost then, and, uh, so we can put this back on, so, two weeks, months?
Um, it, it should be, well, put on for two weeks, by then we'll have succeeded in talking to National Grid. Now that we've, um, succeeded in engaging them by email, I'll have some kind of an update, whether they will have given us the final cost or not, I can't hear it.
And then, is someone gonna reach out to their railroad company again, uh, to discuss the, uh?
And we, we have Kerry Kirkwood, who's actually on the railroad board. So, I think we're good.
Okay.
Right. I was just thinking, since the railroad's federal, would it be worthwhile to get Lightning involved? Have somebody contact him, he's our congressman, and have him send a letter of our concerns.
I mean, that would be great, if the situation could be explained to him, and maybe he can get something going there. A little, a little more traction. Alright, nothing else on that, alright, we'll come back in two weeks. Alright, uh, moving on, there's no new referrals, uh, approval of committee reports, we have none. Uh, nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn, can I get a second? Second by McCall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Again, vote taken. Circle back to the city ops. Kerry.
Followed order, the city operations committee meeting for September second, let the record show that all members are present with the exceptions of Alderman Kerry and Alderman Crawford. I'll make a motion for the minutes to be approved from August twenty-sixth, can I second?
I'll second, but Alderman Kerry is right there.
He does not count in this decorum, because he didn't publish his location.
Oh, okay. Pretend like he's not here.
Uh.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, uh, under unfinished business, motor vehicles on the sidewalks.
What do you, I'm not sure.
Where, where'd we leave that one?
We left it for two weeks, and it was gonna have the report on how many, uh, uh, how many.
How many infractions were cited, I believe, is where we were starting.
At, at, at next Tuesday's meeting.
That was put on a couple of weeks ago. You had said that you would have that report to light.
I can give you a, a, uh, I know they've given out twenty warnings, uh, right after council asked for us to be more, uh, looked at, uh, they've given out one ticket and I, one city ordinance ticket, and I couldn't get the numbers on the vehicle and traffic tickets, so I'm hoping to have them, uh, in the next couple of days.
I, I did wanna add some things to this, but, no, one second, I'll hurry.
Yep.
Bill, what's the city ordinance ticket on that? Before?
The, uh, in the zone that was, uh, you know, screwed. I believe that's State Union to the tracks.
Just past that, and when we put the signage, we're, if it said that you can't without the signs, we put the signs up last year, right?
Yeah, and then down to Seventh Street.
Somewhere down there, okay, I see. Vernon?
Yeah, I just wanted to, on the record, uh, discuss this, just here more before I just call it good. Um, first, I, just reading over, uh, the ordinance on New York, uh, vehicle and traffic law for, uh, bikes, electric assist, scooters, and motorized bikes. And there was a couple of things that, that I wanted to highlight, uh, on this, and they were just wanna go through this, cause I wanna print it certain pages, uh, the, some of the laws, uh, were, were on, is, for the E scooters and bikes, they come in class, class one, two, and three. And, and I think the city of Olean has bikes within the city that are class three, because they're the only ones of the three classes that go twenty-five mile per hour or faster. Those bikes are only allowed in New York City, they're not allowed in the city of Olean. Uh, there is a population standard that is required to even have that bike in this city. Uh, and then, when it comes to class one and class twos, uh, helmets are required for sixteen, seventeen-year-olds and, and down uh, for class, uh, three, it's mandatory home. Uh, again, only legal in New York City. Uh, there were some restrictions for fourteen-year-olds and, and younger, there were restrictions for, uh, those that are sixteen, seventeen, uh, and then there are rules for if you're going to cite them, uh, depending on the age, and then how that can be done, uh, if they're younger, and then when they're in that teenage. Uh, and something else I wanted to highlight, uh, that already on the books, no bicycles with electric assist shall be operating on a sidewalk. Uh, and there is a public law one oh one dash three three six. Uh, everyone operating bicycle with electric assist shall yield to ride away to pedestrians, which we seem to have a problem with here in the city. Uh, persons operating bicycles with electric assist upon a roadway shall ride single file. Uh, I know on motorcycle in New York, you can't ride side by side, so it makes sense that you can't do the same with the bicycle, uh, on a roadway. Uh, let's see. Uh, the thirty mile per hour seems to be the limit for any of these bikes and scooters. Uh, none of the motorized vehicles were allowed at all, I, I've seen, and I've also seen in the city of Olean, uh, and on our social media page, there's a gentleman that rides a scooter, uh, shirtless, majority of the time, but he rides through town in the city streets and, uh, I'm pretty confident that that particular vehicle that he's riding should have a license plate on it, and it does not. Uh, if I can't ride my four-wheeler through the streets, and he definitely can't ride that through the streets without, uh, registration permit. Uh, let's see. Uh, so the note for the New York City only for the class three bikes, you have to have a population of one million or more. Obviously, Olean does not have that. Jack just missed it, by a few zeros. Uh, let's see. Then, something else I found interesting, uh, any of these scooters, bikes, uh, especially those that are electric assist, as of June first, twenty twenty-two, they must have a manufactured label on the vehicle, on that particular, uh, item, and it has to have the class, it has to have the maximum motor set to speed, and it must have the motor wattage of that, uh, vehicle. So, there are a lot of things that are already on the books, uh, there are fines listed, uh, I didn't think there was anything else I needed to mention. Of course, they can't be intoxicated with drugs, uh, and so forth. So, to me, uh, I know we brought this topic up numerous times, it's been postponed, it's been put to the side, we waited on this information, that information. I think they're, what our city needs is just enforcement. Uh, I don't think we need to revisit anything else on this, I'm perfectly fine with, uh, moving forward with this. Uh, I would like to know, uh, all the informations on the infractions, but as, as far as anything else, I thi- I think I'm good. Uh, I think our police department has everything they need already in the books for this particular topic.
So?
So, one of the things with, with that, between the class two and class three, that, that New York City didn't really say anything other than twenty miles here and twenty-five, it didn't say, like, was there a different size motor or what have you? So, I, I almost think it would be helpful for our police department to have some education on maybe identific- identifying them, um, because from reading this, I wouldn't know what the difference was, because it really doesn't say anything difference other than, um, twenty-five mi- one can reach twenty miles an hour and the other twenty-five. So, I, I think that, you know, perhaps if that is a, um, gap in maybe knowledge, then, uh, making sure that the police have all the information they need to be able to identify them and or maybe they already know, um, but then maybe also publishing something so that, um, not just on our webpage, but maybe that's where the time's arrow, cause it's also online, people read it online, could publish that clearly we don't meet the threshold for one million people, so that, you know, there should be no class three anywhere in Cataragis County, Allegheny County, Steben County, I mean, you kinda name it. Um, in terms of, but I would agree, I, I think all the information is there in that it just is, as we've said about, um, enforcement and education of the public.
One more thing?
Yep. Paul raised a good point, I don't know if, uh, maybe the city could put together something small, maybe a, a five or six to eight bullet, bulletin, just to say the, the do's and don'ts of, uh, electric, uh, scooters, uh, vehicles, I guess we could say. Uh, just to illustrate the, the do's and don'ts, uh, kinda similar to what we did with the circles when the circles came, you had to put a little thing out there to just explain to the people how you yield and, and go in, I mean, it sounds, uh, I don't know, a, a little, a little crazy, but I, I think every little bit helps people to read and, uh, maybe it would help. Uh, then also help with education.
And I also think we need to add to that the, uh, safety consideration that you keep them unplugged when not used, cause they have a tendency, the lithium ion batteries have a tendency to overheat and catch fire, and they're actually pretty hard to put out once they, uh, catch fire, so that would be something. The other thing I was reading is, you were quoting the state law, we actually have to pass an ordinance to permit them to ride on the street, uh, excuse me, on the sidewalk. They're not allowed to unless we specifically permit it.
Yep. And that's another one that, you know, I know when I ride my scooter, I pretty much ride in the street. Uh, until I see a bunch of cars coming, then I jump on the curb, cause I don't want to get accidentally hit. Uh, but yeah, there, there is no riding on the sidewalk at all with these, with these tools.
Alright, anything else? So, you're still waiting, you said you would have those numbers next week, Bill?
Yes.
Timothy, can you pop that back on? Alright, under visibility sight lines of the divided streets, James, you sent out an email, I guess, are you touching on this?
Um, yeah, so I guess the update is, there are no specific uh, criteria or guidance for this situation, so we really are just working with the standard stopping sight distance, which is the, the same design guidance we use for intersection stop signs, lots of other traffic, um, design questions. So, I, I did, as I said in the memo, I toured North Union Street on foot and it uh, became very clear when you walk it, that the hanging baskets are the big bad actor in terms of, excuse me, being at the right sight distance, um, in terms of height above the ground, because when you watch the cars go down the street, those baskets block the driver's windows essentially completely. So, next step is to map the actual sight lines using the stopping sight distance and locate all those hanging baskets and see if we have to pull some of them out or move them somewhere else. Um, and of course, we will keep on our list the trimming of the trees that are right near, well, actually, the trimming of all the trees in the median, but specifically the ones right near the crosswalks. Uh, those are the first two things we can do. Um, and I, we will check some elevations to see how high all those rose bushes are. Some of them, I think, are probably gonna prove to be above three point five feet above the pavement, but a lot of them, you know, looking at them over the past week or so, I think a lot of them probably are not. They're pretty tight to the ground, and as long as, uh, you know, the beautification committee can prune them, so they stay down there, they shouldn't be the problem. So, next step for me is to find some time to go to the field and map all of those hanging basket poles.
Are those sight guidelines, are they the same ones that code you came up with, three to eight feet? Local ordinance?
Um, no, I got, I got three and a half to seven from a contact in the consulting world. And I didn't actually get from him a quote about where that was from. So, the, the best, uh, code, if you will, is probably still the three to eight. Uh, but one of the D O T rules only goes to seven. Uh, so that apparently not, not all the codes are in agreement on that number.
So, we, and ours is more restrictive, so I was looking for consistency, say, maybe then we should, if you wanna everybody agrees to three and a half to seven, then the local code should be changed to three and a half to seven.
We could do that, I, I would like to track down exactly where that, what the reference is that that came from. I think it's probably, uh, National Highway Administration Design Guidance.
Cause I know it's, was it, Eric, eight feet back from the edge of the sidewalk, can't be more than?
Yeah.
Is it thirty-six or thirty-two, though, I can't? I know there's a sight line.
I think it's thirty-six.
Okay.
In our code.
So, then maybe you look at that, and then just see if maybe we should just modify it, just, I mean, if we can have three and a half to seven, then, you know, make it so that's what the homeowners are, three and a half to seven, just have consistency.
Yeah, so everybody.
Or we adopt three to eight.
Okay.
You want a couple of weeks to, four weeks?
Yeah, four weeks would be good with all the, uh, the.
I mean, if you're gonna do the four weeks to look at that stuff, that's fine, you've already acknowledged that some of them are clearly an issue, and that you could just address them.
Yeah.
Relatively, quickly.
Right, there's work to be done aside from the code issue.
It's fine, as long as you're interested in that. Anything else on that? Okay, uh, no new referrals, no committee, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall, in favor?
Aye. Okay, I'll call for the finance committee meeting for Tuesday, September second, let the record show that all, all of them are here with the exception of Alderman Kerry, who we can't see up there, and Alderman Crawford. Um, approval of the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, August twenty sec- or twenty-sixth. I will make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Benyon, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have a couple of things under unfinished business. We were looking to, and we said when we reconvened for our regular meetings in September, we would do capital um, funds and some capital project updates, and with the capital funds, we're just basically looking to do five at a time, so that we're not here. Um, plus, that gives us more time with lends overall, so. So, and it should give us then through, you know, the, um, you know, uh, I think twenty weeks, and then think for whatever it is, and we'll be to go. So, basically reviewing them once a year, each one, okay? With that, welcome.
Sounds good. I will start with capital project one eighty-one, which is the zombie grant. Um, there's no expenses so far for this year, there's a balance of thirty-four thousand dollars in there right now. There's not much on this one, any questions?
All in the minutes.
So, when they, like, board up in Shakira, a vacant house under that, who, I, I know that's passed off, but who pays the initial?
Usually Coles. Coles, eh?
Just comes out, like, the operating budget, Eric?
Yes, um, four, five, four, five, five.
Okay. So, specifically, this one's used for what, then? This one eighty-one?
This one is building to the community development, I can check with Kerry on this one. I know sometimes she would move money from there to Coles to do some work.
Wasn't this, did this have to do with some of the houses owned by the banks?
I thought it was that, having to do with vacant property registration that was put in place, that they don't secure them, you secured it, I thought. That's why I asked Eric, not to put you on the spot.
I'm not sure I can answer it though.
Just to interrupt, there's a separate capital one for the vacant property registration.
What number is that, do you know, it's relevant?
Two something, Mr. Trump.
Yeah, while it's odd, I, I, I thought the, the zombie actually went back to the, the bank-owned properties. And I could be wrong, but, so can you just look into that and then email us?
I will.
We can get an entire email, no, just kidding.
I would appreciate that, thank you. Make a note so I remember to file up too.
I mean, depending on what is useful or not being used for, we may have to revisit it.
Yes. And that's actually the, going through each one is to figure out, you know, is it something we still need, should it, is it covered under another, um, fund balance, et cetera, so, okay.
So, we're just gonna take an email for this information and then?
Yeah, I'll have it to show you Kerry on this one, cause that's her capital project, I only wanna.
Yep, no, that's fine, I just was kinda wondering, cause there's so many, and sometimes it's kinda like, I wouldn't even mind some bullets on there that says, like, this is what this one's used for.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I mean, there's, how many, how many capital funds are there, Glenn's off the top of your head?
A hundred and.
Yeah, so I mean, sometimes it would be bad just to have some bullet points to say this one's used for this.
I mean, there's enough room in this paper, we could probably state it permanently for, for future meetings.
I have a memo filled there. So, if you email us, and then if we have questions when we have the next finance committee meeting, we'll circle back and revisit.
Hi, next one is one eighty-five, the true, trip pooling and trip removal. Um, so far, we've used sixteen hundred dollars out of that. And on the left-hand side, that's money coming back in through liens, taxes from prior year, a sixty-one hundred dollars put in there, and right now, we have a balance of eighty-one hundred to be used.
This is the complaint?
Correct.
One, okay, cause we have a couple, so I just might make sure we get it.
Any questions on this one? Next one is one eighty-six, the port buses, um, this one, we just moved the money all out, cause, um, we no longer do the old service, so we had to move the money back to the county, cause we, they let us borrow two hundred and forty thousand dollars last year, two years ago. because we, they let us borrow $240,000 last year, two years ago, because they didn't, wasn't making us whole, so we had money from the county and we had to pay them back. They checking out last month, eight twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five. It was like eight twenty-seven, I'm sorry.
LENS, did we ever receive all of our monies from, what was it, state, federal reimbursement?
Yes.
Reimbursement?
The last part of it was $136,000. If you look on the left-hand side of that one sheet, um, that money came August eighth.
Of this year?
Of this year.
Okay.
So, have we, so money in, money out, right?
Well, my, $240 goes back to the county and the $136 goes back to the general fund because that's what that money belongs to.
Okay, so now, should this then be zeroed out so we can close it?
It is zeroed out. I was feeling on this first tab line, it's zeroing now. Eventually, we'll...
Okay, so once you move that money to the general fund, then we'll close this?
It's already been moved. Um, I think we should put a PL in place to close those, um, that one.
Okay. So, this $136,518 is already in the general fund?
The general fund, correct.
Do you know what the general fund balance is off of? Off of your head?
Are you looking for that specific port?
Well, no, once we added that back in what the, the total amount was.
Looking for the, um, fund balance, you mean?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Because right now, it's at $1.7 million right now. But once, we're not gonna, well, this one gonna get added to it when we close the book in May 2026. That's when we'll get the whole total as a whole.
So, that's the balance without that reimbursement?
Without that, because we just got, the, the amount I gave you, that's for May 31st, 2025, this last fiscal year. So, once we end, close the book in May 31st, 2026, then that will roll over to that, to that fund. We only close it once a year, different times.
So, you close it once a year, but you add to it, so...
Yeah, once, once the book is closed, it, everything's on a closed egg against that fund balance. It doesn't go straight to, because right now, it's sitting in the, the revenue line for the port service, which is the AO1-4-3591.
Is, I get the once a year, well, maybe I don't get the once a year. Is there a reason, though, that we don't just move it over so it shows up there in the fund balance?
Um, I don't think we can do that. We, we only close the book once a year. I can find out with the state, um, the, the auditors. But I don't think, because the last time I asked that question to one of them, said, "We can't do that." Once we close the book every year, it's automatically, any leftover fund goes to the fund balance every year. That was a previous auditors that told me that.
So, you're looking relative to that one?
Yeah, yeah, it would, yeah, it would seem like if you had money, you should be able to... Can you check into that and then let us, let us know so that we don't kind of have money hanging out here in this line item and over here?
We'd already told you to move that money?
No.
Because we haven't got the money back yet, right? We've done refunding.
So, when do we get the money back?
August eighth.
August eighth.
August eighth, okay.
So, what happened? I put the money there and I spoke with Carrie from community development. She said, "No, the money should be in the general fund, not the capital project." Because it's, it belongs to the ports, um, port service operation.
Because retired, not in our standpoint, don't you need a PL to move that? Shouldn't it have gone back in there and then you need a PL to move it from there to there?
No, that was a mistake on my part, so I could actually be able to fix that.
So, is this our money or is this Allegany County's money?
No, no, no. That, that's, that's our money.
Yeah, the $136...
That's the money that was both the costs.
So, that's ours, okay.
Yeah.
So, I can't understand why we can't have a running total like you guys were talking about.
I mean, I can have a running total, but at the end of the year, that's when the book will close. That's where the fund balance get all this fund cost. Whatever you go over with on any line, they're gonna go, come over from the fund balance. If you have more money, they'll go add, add it to a different balance at the end of the year.
I mean, to me, that makes sense because we wouldn't close our capital funds usually until the end of the year or when projects were complete and then whatever was left over would go. Um, you manually can keep a running total, but it would be...
I, I do have a running total manually. It's a spreadsheet that I have. Actually, it's one of my, it's on video as well for tonight. That, so, the second page of this, this packet right here, that's, that's your fund balance. I can add it to that one if, if that makes any sense.
Well, I, I think that becomes a little confusing then. So, you're saying, though, is that we need to keep this open until the end of the year so that it can move into the fund balance?
No, not the capital project. The capital project and the general fund are two separate ones.
Right.
The capital project doesn't, never gets closed, will it? It stays open for as long as the council want to keep a capital project open.
Right, but I'm saying because it can't roll over into the general fund, you're saying until, into the fund balance, until...
No, no, we, we, the money is sitting in the general fund right now in account AO1-4-3591, which is the ports, um, revenue.
So, are you saying you mistakenly put it in the capital fund to begin with?
And it belongs to the general fund.
So, in the past, those reimbursements always went to the general fund? So, that was just a mistake?
That's mistaken my, I had to...
Okay, so now, to fix that, you just moved it. So, the money is now where it should have been?
It should, now it's sitting away, so it should be in the general fund, the ports revenue line.
Yes, that's what I was trying to establish, that it was in the...
It's there because he accounted for it.
And you, so now, this is zeroed out and we can close this one?
Yeah, we can put a PL and close it.
Because there's no reason for us to keep this open.
Unless you want...
What's our annual contribution, that was $30,000?
It's $30,000.
I mean, the gatekeeper was, if you want to just measure, put $30,000 in there.
We, we have a line into the general fund for that expense line for...
A line item? I would say let's bring it up and close it. So, let's put in a PL to close it?
Yep, that's fine, um...
Now that we know where that money is, thanks, LENS.
Actually, there's, there's two, there's two of them that need to be closed with it.
Okay.
The, the other one was 119. That money went back to the Allegany County because we no longer doing the port operations. Because there's a capital project for that, 1186. And the money, the amount was, I could figure that out. The amount would transfer to them. Because that capital project had $330,000 in there for the ports reserve. Then we had to move that money to Allegany County since now they took over the, the port operations. That one was public and need to be closed as well.
Okay, yep.
So, we are free and clear now?
We no longer do ports.
Is both of them capital funded?
The checks went out, uh, letters went out to Allegany County today and to Cataralas County for the money that, remember, Cataralas County was loaning this money. So, we're, we, uh, those are satisfied. Once they cash the checks.
Are those the two that are ready to be closed out ones?
For now, yes.
Just can't we do that one PL, something like we did before? One resolution?
Any more questions on that one?
Thank you.
And next one is 187, the playground reserve. Um, we have a balance of $12,504 in there. And there's no, nothing coming in, nothing leaving this one right now for the year.
This is for Kaboom for playground application?
That was the, was it the parklet on Whitney Ave? And we got that, those, we got that money from Kaboom Credit, I believe, playground.
So, are there restrictions on what we can utilize this, these funds for?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'll have to check with Carrie on that one also because that's her, that's her capital project.
And it's probably set aside for strictly playground.
Right, but if we've, if we've done what we're going to in the parklet, then we know a park that could use some things.
I, I believe there was work to be done. I don't know exactly, you know, what needs to be done over there, but I do, I do believe there's something else to be done over there. I'll check with Carrie and I will...
Which parks were these?
The parklet by Whitney Ave.
This is the money, can we just move this money here in a few years or something like that?
Last, last year, I think we, we moved it.
Wasn't there a second one?
We moved money twice. It was from, uh, into, uh, that parklet. And there's some work to be done down there, so we'll have to check on this.
So, if we bring this back, next thing you do, capital projects, so now what does money should be used, be used for or something?
Yeah, if we can, um, I guess if we can get an email and then I'll put it on my list for follow-up so if we have questions, then we can review that. Because we have two of them now to kind of go through. The zombie fund and the Whitney Parklet. Well, we'll call it the Kaboom.
And last one for tonight, it's 188, walkable only in phase two. Uh, that project is done, a couple years ago, I believe, and we still have some money left over in there for $300,000. Um, there's nothing going in and out right now in this capital project.
So, if the project is done, can this money be transferred into the general fund? And have this account closed?
Um, sometimes, when, when that project took place, I wasn't on board yet. But sometimes when we took a ban, that money has to have a certain use. We cannot use it for anything else. If not, we have to use that money left over to pay down the bond.
Part of us to, you know... What section was phase two?
Main Street, Main Street from North Union over to Front.
Oh.
And by the hospital and then going down Front Street a little ways.
The first, first half, yeah, out to 16 and around that intersection, correct?
And then down to, uh, Center Street, put in the, uh...
Oh, yeah.
The lights there, the hawk, I guess you call them hawk lights. That was part of that.
So, is, we have a balance in there of $300,000, so is this the city's money? Frank, he just said that he'd have to look if it's restricted use.
I know, I know the city, the city had a share of $357,000. They had to put up, um, for that, for that project. Um, I sent out an email to our, um, debt council, Municipal Solutions, and I'm waiting for some answers on that very project.
So, let's do this. Um, I'm in agreement with Dave there. Let's kind of put back on for, um, the next finance committee, then 181, 187, and 188 for clarification. In the meantime, email and then if we, we manage it through that way, then we can just, you know, restrict their use. Do we have to pay down on, I mean, if we do, then I guess we need to.
So, basically, usually that money should go back to the debt service, usually, um, to pay on the debt service. But I'm waiting, uh, I spoke with Maggie today, but I didn't get exactly what I wanted. I sent a second email today. I'm waiting for some answers.
Okay. So, we'll just get, then, get, I mean, if you shoot us an email, but we'll put that on for two weeks just for further final clarification.
181?
187, 188. Alderman and Robin, Earl, President Robinson?
I just have a quick question. Um, since we have a ballot here in this fund, it possible that we may have to pay the, the bond, but could you also inquire on whether or not, if, let's say, there is something else in that region, Main Street from Union to Front to Center, that we'd like to improve? If we still had that money, maybe this is a good opportunity to utilize it to, uh, maybe fix a wrong, uh, make something even better, you know, uh, come up with, you know, another idea, something inexpensive that we can use for that area down there. Uh, I mean, I don't know, that, I would think it would fall under improvements for that project and, uh, maybe we can utilize those funds before we do, uh, pay back any balances.
I was gonna say, kind of as we reallocated some money to be able to go to East State for some paving and such.
Yeah.
Alderman and Robin.
Just with what Vernon said, I know James can look at. I know one of the bad spots is when that intersection of Main and Front was kind of turned to that, uh, right straight instead of the way that it used to be. It really backs the traffic all the way up through. I think Eric, who's nodding yes at me, is gonna agree that when that went to a right straight lane, it used to be right only so you could move a lot of the cars because the big way the turn is, is right. Far less went left and straight. And that allows that all the way up through, all the way over to the fire station and through that entire intersection. And also, with the traffic count that's on Front Street, maybe a left-hand arrow light to clear some of that traffic out because typically, at peak times, you might get one or two cars that actually turn left and that bottom knocks that all up through that, through that bump out that's at first half. Once they're stuck there, they're at the mercy of as many cars as that can make a light or left on that light, so... You can probably have that by next week, right, James?
Anastasia.
Mayor, last you were talking, you were talking about putting electricity down there at that round, about on North Union Street. Has that ever been done or can this money be used for expenses in that area? I'm assuming that electricity hasn't been put, been put there at the round about yet?
No. It has to be there, it has to be, uh, that needs to be aborted so we could, we could check and see if that's improved. And it's in the, it's in the area there, so... Have to take a look at the graph and see what it, what it entails. I guess I'll move my...
The round, where LENS, my phone calls.
See, aren't you glad it's only five today?
We're, we're, there's a bit of electric there for you. For the, uh...
It's okay.
Christmas tree? Okay, so first, it sounds like we need to know kind of what entails and what the restrictions are for us to be able to do anything.
I will call Municipal Solutions, um, tomorrow, speak with Maggie and give me some clarification on what we can and cannot do with that fund.
Okay. Any other?
Any more questions?
Okay. Now, we had a couple of capital projects, updates, South Union.
Yes, South Union and Splash Park. I do have the balance on South Union and also 216, which is Splash Park. Um, South Union right now, we have 1.2 million in the, in the fund that to be used and the project is still ongoing. Um, we have some outstanding, that one is not in there, I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there. Sorry, I'm just reading through my notes.
Okay.
Um, and also, capital project 216, which is, uh, the Splash Park. We have a balance of $929,000 in there. And that one is also ongoing and I'm gonna check with, right. Just need to put a last name on it. Or see where we are as far as production?
Yeah, so practically, outside of finances, um, South Union Street is actually going pretty well, although our water distribution crew tonight may not agree with that because they were still in the street at six o'clock when the heavens opened up. Because they were still in the street at six o'clock when the heavens opened up, so I fear they got pretty wet this evening. They were doing, they've been, last week and this week, they've been doing, there's five water services and a new fire hydrant lead that we were installing on the very north end of that project. And today, they did the fire hydrant lead and one water service in the same trench, which is why they're still out there at six o'clock. They have one, just one service left, assuming that they were able to finish up, and the water didn't chase them off. The milling and repaving is scheduled with the New York State DOT. Striking will be in right after that. So everything should be buttoned up on South Union by the end of September, down to the last detail, hopefully. Splash Park continues to struggle, but it is moving forward. They have started pouring the actual splash pad. They are still waiting on a couple of foundation pieces from Vortex, which is the vendor that manufactured all the Splash Park equipment. They should be here, I don't know if it's this week or next week, they should be here. So practically, honestly, I would say we're hoping that first of October, we might be able to start putting water in something. I don't, I don't have to recount for this council the struggles that that project has had, so I'm very conservative, I guess, about making any claims when it'll be done. But it is continuing to move forward, and it is still within budget.
So I read that, thank you again for the information you've sent out with the foundation pieces. Does that mean they were pieces that we did not get in the first go-round of purchasing? Or are they pieces that were no longer functional because they sat out there?
If anything, they were pieces that we did not get. We are still trying to backtrack on our paperwork and prove or disprove whether they were in the initial shipment.
And we had a, yes, we are, yes, well aware of the ongoing challenges with the Splash Park, but I think we thought, like, beginning of September, I think, was kind of Labor Day in that ballpark. We didn't have anything in there about potential, what happens if they weren't within the timeframe, did we?
The contract does have liquidated damages in it if we chose to assess them. Given the way the bids were, and frankly, the money that this contractor left on the table, we have been avoiding, or I guess not avoiding, but so far, we have chosen to not assess liquidated damages in the interest of keeping them moving forward to bring it to completion. But I, Lenz, you can help me on this one. Are you still holding their check?
Yes, that's the habit.
So we did get some pushback from a past subcontractor of theirs on this job that they hadn't been paid, so we're in agreement with PV Paving. We're holding on to their check until we get written confirmation that that situation has been resolved.
And they have their own engineering that's doing kind of the site, onsite kind of approval in?
We, we have a CPL as an inspection firm to keep in track of them. On a part-time basis, we did not choose to hire them full-time.
Alderman Robinson.
He said CPL.
Clark Patterson Lee.
Are they doing anything else?
They're also doing a full-time inspection on South Union Street.
Great.
And they did the design on, on South Union Street.
So, since this piggybacked to the South Union Street, and I wanted to ask about the, the five lines that were put in, and I seen that they cut into the curb. Is that, project management-wise, I mean, I don't know how the project management aspect where, I don't know, it's kind of like getting in the shower, rinsing, and then putting soap on. We literally laid new curb and then cut the curb to put in this new water line, so is someone liable for that? Is the city on the hook for putting that in?
That is on Millennium Construction.
Is on Millennium Construction, okay. So, but.
Their choice to go ahead and slip line through that area ahead of the placement of the water services, so.
So Millennium Construction decided to move forward, Clark Patterson Lee is Engineering Services. And this is all kind of juvenile to me, so they're the ones that do the inspections, Clark Patterson Lee, so shouldn't they have said no wait stop, or that's not how it works?
So before my time, there was apparently a significant amount of conversation about when these services should be replaced. You know, and I guess in the simplest format, you would start at the bottom and work your way up. Millennium, for reasons that, you know, I haven't discussed with them, made a choice to not do it that way. And, and there was some uncertainty in the design plans as far as what size these five services were. Which is in a conmuted way how the city got involved to actually be installing those upgrades in the middle of a contracted construction project. But at the end of the day, the project management question falls back to Millennium Construction, and that's, that was the way they chose to go forward.
As long as they're not charging us extra for this.
I have heard no conversation about requests for an extra change order for that curb.
That was my question exactly. Are we gonna pay twice for the same thing?
Right, but they're, they've been included doing that, John?
They've been included some funding for it, but because the size of the pipes all turned out to be wrong, it wasn't directly, it wasn't the right amount, if you will. So when, after, we went back and forth with them for a while, and we elected to self-perform those five services, that means we will not be charged by them for that work for those five services.
So that whatever was allotted to that during that bid process, that will be back out?
Yes.
And the other question I had is, does that create any type of weak point in that curb when you're cutting it out for a future?
Probably not really. The curbs are unreinforced concrete curbs because they're slipformed, so you're probably really not gonna notice it.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I just wanted to make sure. Lenz, you did say on both of those projects that some are, some of the contingency was utilized, right?
I think James had it as well.
Oh, that's it. Okay, okay.
We have had a couple of things where we've utilized the contingency.
Okay.
But we still have contingency left.
Okay, that's where I wanted to, to check and see. Sorry, Lenz, I knew I read it, so, thank you. Any other questions on either South Union Street and, or the Splash Park? Okay. New referrals for consideration. Lenz, you had on there finance bills, frequency changes.
That's just a question I do have, because lately, we've been getting a lot of tenders that suddenly get paid once a month, and it will only pay because we went down to where all of, some of our bills are passed through a couple of weeks, almost to a month. And my, 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 trying to thought was I spoke with Account Payable, and I said, why don't we pay bill twice a month instead of once a month? So I don't know if there's something in the charter that says we only have to do it once a month or not. I don't know. That's just a question, I don't know.
I don't remember. I'll, I'll go back and read it. I don't remember anything in there about that. I think it would go down back to your policy and procedure. And if you built that in there to do it, I mean, you might want to say we do it on opposite weeks of payroll so that it's not too crazy or something, but I think it would go back to your policy and procedures that you're building. And I think, we can check, but I don't remember anything in there at all.
I agree. I don't recall anything of that nature in, in the charter. Just your duties.
Yep.
That's it. But as far as something like that, yeah, I will, I will refer to your own policies and procedures, and I mean, if it's something that would have to be presented to the council to approve, I mean, just break it forward. Those changes, or, but I think you have the flexibility to change your own policies there, so that you have a departmentally.
And Mayor, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
This is the first I'm hearing about this, but I'll have a conversation with Lenz tomorrow about it. I don't see why these, these, I don't know how many are, that were getting late or not, but we could always take those few that are possibly going late and put them on the council agenda. You know, to make the payments, you know, it can be the first meeting of the month, the first council meeting. We could take that and say, these utility, I'm just using this, these utility bills are due now, we can't wait till the end of the month. For approval, we can put them on at that meeting and have them for approval then, something like that, so.
I think after Mayor and Lenz talk and then see if we need to do a, you know, because I think you're in the midst of putting together your policies and procedures for the department. And I think there are certainly agencies I know that kind of do kind of a rolling kind of bill pay component, so I think it's gonna be what's gonna be best for the city, but we still, I think, can get, no matter what's determined, once a month, kind of the.
Sometimes invoices are not thirty days, and it puts us, you know, past that, so those are ones that can be brought, you know, not saying make the full shot, but the ones that are necessary, bring them at the council meeting for the, you know, second meeting of the month, or most of these are put on for a final meeting of the month.
And I guess I would, to wonder, you know, what best practices, you know, what other similar-sized cities and stuff do, what NICOM recommends in terms of that, so.
You don't have a standard policy, like where you set out that you're a net sixty pay? Because I know a lot of companies that I deal with, they just set out when they establish a account that they're, you know, that they want to be a net sixty pay to kind of, because a lot of reconstruction and stuff.
So when we're setting up accounts or renegotiating that.
When you're gonna go to a vendor, you, you establish that you're a net sixty payee?
So we don't have that at all.
For those who might be listening to us, you tell them what that is. Explain.
You're just like, so if I get a contractor that comes in and they want to set it up, a lot of times, they'll just say, they establish themselves from the beginning that their terms are, like, I'm a net sixty payee, so that means they're gonna pay a net sixty from the invoice date.
Sixty.
Instead of net thirty, which is what he's talking about there, so that you have the choice to either accept them terms or not, if they want to do this, the city, I mean. Because typically, it always goes over that thirty-day mark anyway, so that kind of just helps alleviate potential late fees anyway, so if you just establish yourself, city, why does it not sixty payee, it would probably help your case too.
So.
With future, no, I mean, and that's with future vendors. It's hard to go backwards.
Well, yeah, and, and we get that a lot of the stuff you inherited, that you didn't necessarily set up, that they were things that came there, but you might still be able to reestablish or.
Between that and why you pay that, it would probably solve a lot of your stuff.
It's hard to juggle, I don't know, because sometimes we have to call them and say, hey, we, we are a municipality, we don't pay, we only pay once a month, so it's, it's hard, but.
Some of them don't care.
Yes, some don't care.
Your product.
I mean, specifically those little mom and pop shop, those are the guys that depend on their one check, so we have, they have to come and say, hey, it's been two weeks, where's my check, and blah, 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 but, I don't know.
And maybe that, because I get too, that their, their budget may not be as, as big, right, so they need that, that five thousand dollars means a whole lot more than if we're, we're paying a larger corporation, so maybe that kind of lumping all of them.
I don't see the problem if you want to make payments every two weeks. I don't see the problem with that. It's up to being an inter-office procedure that you develop that, after you talk to the mayor, devise something. I don't see the problem with getting paid every two, send bills out every two weeks, every two weeks, if you approve them.
I think it's just about coming up with the operating procedure and what works for, for, for the city. Capital projects projected.
All right, I'll also give you packets. There's three pages in there. Most of them are IT guys. And I suggest Jerry is also here to talk about some of his IT. The first one is this exchange server, I believe. There's two compartments on that one. There's like twenty-five, twenty-five thousand, one forty-one, I believe. Jerry, you can chime in if you guys have any questions.
So does, Jerry, does that get us to what we actually need?
It's, right now, the exchange server that we have is end-of-life as of October of this year.
Oh, no, no pressure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it, Microsoft kind of dumped a lot of stuff on us late in the year. I did put that in one sheet. But, yeah, we have to, we were actually gonna try to like slide by with the non-end-of-life product that we had now, but then we found out that we wouldn't be able to access email from your phone, from the web browser.
Oh, like today?
Yeah, so basically, except you guys wanted to check your email, you would have to log in this computer machine in this building, which obviously isn't good for anybody, so. Because of that, we're, we're kind of scrambling now where we have to get the exchange server, the update, our exchange server version, because we're on 2016 right now.
So my question is, does this fully get you what you need to be able to meet the needs for the next couple of years?
Yes, this, this should take care of us for, barring any surprises from Microsoft, it should give us, I would say, at least a good five or six years, because we're gonna grab, we want to get the latest version. If you're spending the money, you might as well just get the latest version, because there really isn't a big difference in, you know, in versions. So, yeah, that's, yeah, that exchange server, that, that basically keeps our email running for probably the next, you know, quarter, four or five, six years.
So I see this is under capital project, but it doesn't look like it's optional, so, Mayor, you.
No, we're, I mean, we're, we're, we're doing a little time right now with our emails.
So.
We need to get this fixed ASAP.
So my thought is that we should, since I'm guessing we have no line item to cover this, unless you have some contingency dollars, and I don't remember you having any.
Of course, we try to keep it tight budget.
Yes, well, very tight, I think IT has.
Yeah.
So I, I'm guessing we should probably move on this so it can come out of fund balance.
So some of these things you have on this one, you gave us, Jerry, are slightly different than the ones that's live and save us, so what's?
I, well, I don't know if you guys remember, I spoke about capital projects, you know, back during budget bucks. We had all these things in there except for exchange. So I see there's, you know, there's the bank one fifty-nine on the sheet that I handed out, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand. We basically, if you look the line rule that. Hundred fifty-nine thousand. Um, we basically, if you look the line of rule that, we're looking at postponing the cameras. Cause we're gonna upgrade twenty of the cameras in the building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, postponing the building wireless, and then hopefully postponing office twenty twenty-one. Um, cause unfortunately, office is also going to be, uh, end of life in October. So that's why we cut that hundred and one thousand off of there, just to try to, yeah. Cut back on the sticker shock of the big number that we're throwing at you. And honestly, the things that we're going for are pretty, like you said, it's hard to say no without losing some pretty significant services. And like, I can go through real quick. Like, the camera server we have is, is from twenty, I believe it's twenty seventeen. And I'm rebooting it because our investigators can't do anything with it, cause they had to grab video from like buildings and stuff like that for discovering. So I'm rebooting that server every two weeks because it just hangs out. And it's, you know, again, it's, it's a server of this twenty, from twenty seventeen, so it's, we've beaten it to death as much as we can. So that's the, the first lines of ten thousand. Um, again, the security cameras, we could probably live without a second one for thirteen thousand.
So is that the one where we were looking to upgrade them, where they had, um, voice?
Uh, we have a few right now, but yeah, that would upgrade to the voice on the newer cameras. Again, I, I just kinda slip all where we might be able to take things out and where we really can't take things out, so.
Okay.
Just suggestions for, you know, we're free to go with whatever you guys want.
I don't know, keep, keep going. Budgeting software?
That is the software we've, we've been talking about, that's, that's the.
That we're still figuring out.
Actually, Jerry and I, we, we had a discussion with ENCODE, Talid Technology. So basically what they showing us, what they displayed to us in that, in that meeting, it's not gonna do what we think it was going to do. So it's probably gonna be our, our best bet right now, it would be the second presentation we had, the Open Gov case. Um, I think it was forty, to get it started, forty-one year price, I think it was like sixty-five thousand and change. So I just put seventy in there, just give us, give us some buffer in there. And I spoke with, um, CDO of Lufthansa, and that's what they all, they're, they're currently using that right now. Actually, they left ClearGov and go to Open Gov, and it's been good to them. And, um, I spoke with the, the accountant, accountant there, and he seems to be pleased with that part, part of it there. And to get it started, um, it would be about sixty-five thousand dollars.
Then what, what was it for each year after? Is that thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, I think it was.
Okay.
This is Jerry on one page here, the four thousand replace wireless access points in the city building. That's not the same four thousand that you have on the replaced devices, correct?
I think he's looking at my, just looking at my one sheet.
Oh, you don't have that, Jerry?
The last one.
The last one under number two.
Oh, yep, yeah, the four thousand.
Yeah, I said replace wireless access points in the city building. Now, this one you made was saying this thing for four thousand dollars, replace current wireless devices in the city buildings. Not the same thing?
Yeah, they are the same thing.
Those are the same thing?
They are the same thing.
Okay.
I just, I, I hope I didn't confuse you too much. I know Len's put together the stuff and, you know, I realize we had some pretty big numbers that were thrown at you. So that's why I kinda put together a set of key oil for detail and some other options.
So. The wireless access points. Help us to understand what, what you need from that, so that we can, right, what?
Well, uh, like right now, if you look up the white, uh, rectangle box up there, that's just the wireless access point that we have in the building. We have, uh, I believe there's twelve, twelve or thirteen of them in the building right now. And they're eleven years old, you know, it's like the original wireless that we get with, when we originally got the wireless. They're working. Again, it's, you know, we're trying to replace things as we can, cause it's, you know, this stuff's gotta die eventually. So yeah, that's basically, we've got these eleven, uh, acts or, eleven year old access points. Uh, if you're looking from line, especially like you do below that, we're actually looking at a different kind of an access point. Because right now, we actually pay a yearly fee for basically the maintenance on these access points that we have. Um, we're looking at the, uh, there's another kind of access point called the Ubiquity Access Point. It's, it's basically, it's, it's a lot cheaper. The initial upfront cost is the four thousand dollars, but will actually be saving, because we won't have the yearly fee for that. That's where that a thousand dollar savings and maintenance cost per year comes in, in the play there. And then actually, again, it's a, it's an access point that's eleven years newer than what we have now, so it's gotta be a lot faster wireless as well.
And the cloud backup, the server with cloud backup?
Yeah, we, basically, we have data servers. Every department has their own folders on the server that's backed up on a nightly basis. And say, if anything goes down, you know, someone mistakenly deletes a file or whatever, we can restore backup from, you know, hours before, days before. I think we save up to, I can't remember how many, but I think it's a few months, where it saves backups for us. And it's just, uh, it, it's a nice system to have, but it's, but you just wanna have backups for your data. Uh, the two layers server that we've got now, again, it's four or five years old, it's, it's kind of a robust machine. So it's, and you figure it gets hammered every day by every department, cause everybody saves stuff on the server. And it's been out of support for, I believe, two years now, but we've been, we've been hitting you guys with stuff pretty much the last three years. So, so we've been trying to put it off, trying to put it off, but we're getting to that point where, where we're talking to our rep from two layers, they're like, yeah, you're probably not gonna wanna push this any, any further than you already have, so that's why we got on there for this year.
So out of support, so worst case scenario would be what?
Well, we hold the dice and keep what we have now, and if it dies, then.
We've lost.
Everybody's data is.
Gone.
Gone. So it's. There's a lot of doom and gloom, but yeah.
No, I mean, I, I think, you know, look, I remember when the medical group, when they lost all their stuff for months, it, it was havoc for everybody, so.
With budgeting software, you're really looking at like two thirty if you wanted to do everything. Cause that seventy's not on your, that seventy's not on your list, but it's on the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I thought we should keep it with the IT, but they have a lot of, um, software that they pay for, that's why I put it there.
No, that's fine, but that one fifty-nine actually should be like two thirty if you add that number, and Jerry's number did not have it in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Which.
Might as well put that together. I done my things.
So fifty-seven would do items, those items, but still not touch the budgeting software. You'd be looking for seventy on that.
Right.
And with that budgeting software, would the, would the office have come into play at all with that?
The office, office budgeting?
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, that. With that, we're, again, we're, it's end of life this year, October of this year. We're hoping to kind of roll the dice on that, that's why we put on the, you know, the postponement.
I guess I'm asking, is, if with that budgeting software, would that have any implications on that?
Would it require?
Would it require that?
And I think he told us no, cause I thought he said it ran on all.
He said it's on Windows.
Yeah.
That's.
It's probably a server, it's probably a server, I, I actually see that.
I think they have a cloud, there's this cloud base. That's something you just log on to, it's like.
Okay.
You use it in password to log on to that.
I know you're talking about whatever version of Windows, or was that kind of a. Yeah, something like that.
Yes, he said it worked with all versions of them.
Cause we see it's, uh, if it's a web based program, then, then you basically just have to make sure you have updated browsers for your computer. And last year, you know, we did you guys a bonus eleven, so we're pretty much up to snuff on Windows eleven. So the machines themselves should be good enough to run that, plus it's a browser based, um, software, so, you know, as long as people use your stuff, you should be okay with that.
So, uh, I should say something, get to where you're like, maybe it's actually one twenty-three this year with the software.
And I also wanted to kind of run another thing with the office. They, they nailed us this year, had a bunch of crazy in this, cause the last time we did this, you may already not remember, it was more like fifty-five, sixty thousand. So for whatever reason, they just nailed us, so now it's like eighty-four thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're, we're trying to see if we can find other cheaper ways of doing it. Cause like right now, when you buy a license in this way, basically you can install it on a few, we have a hundred twenty-five machines. So basically, you get one installer file, you don't have to do a product, it does like an online registration, and you're ready to go. Right now, we're looking at the possibility, which it would be a headache, but it might be a lot, well, it will be cheaper. Though we actually buy like a license at the time, but we only have two products. But again, you know, for a hundred twenty-five users, it would be pretty, it'll be cool, but it'd also be less than eighty-four thousand. And the other thing we're looking at with office, uh, the exchange upgrade, we just found this out just a couple of days ago, actually. Jason came across that the, uh, exchange upgrade will work with the output version we have now, we have office twenty sixteen. But there's no guarantees it's going to work a lot longer. They're not saying it's not gonna work. But there could come a time where the version of output twenty sixteen that we have right now may not work with the upgraded exchange server. So that's the reason why we threw it in there, but, you know, again, it's, I, I realize it's, I'm throwing all the big numbers out here, but.
Well, we'd rather have numbers than you projecting what, what you need than, right, than, than find out where a loss. So it looks to me like of everything you've said, almost everything is imminent, except perhaps the security camera upgrade that's, that's in there.
Yeah, and, you know, the, the cameras and, I mean, the wireless, building wireless is, is used, I mean, like we run the meeting through the wireless.
Yeah.
So it's, it's working. And it's, the one nice thing about that is, it's only four thousand, but it also saves you money if you.
Yes.
Cause like I said, we'll, we'll drive a thousand dollars at our maintenance costs a year.
So the, the city, the city building security camera upgrade, that's for existing ones, right?
Yes.
And, uh, and the one, yeah, we're looking at one additional one at the roundabout over behind the police station.
Remember Robinson?
While we're on the security camera, uh, can you look into Wellsville? I, I saw an article, I could've sworn I screenshot the thing, but I just checked my phone and I didn't have it. But I, I think Wellsville just did, uh, some wireless cameras, and I think it was thirty or forty grand. And as I was reading the article, it seems like they had everything they needed for that amount. And that may, cause I remember going back to search what RPL was for, or the, what we were, what the council was presenting, I remember it was somewhere around a million dollars or something like that. And I was like, that is a huge difference.
For the cost.
What is it that they're getting that that town or city is saying they're good with?
I remember reading the article too, and they're, mainly they're putting cameras on their buildings.
Okay.
So, uh, their initial building, their, uh, I think service treatment, water.
Okay, so it's the route, the community, or, or their city. So, I mean, if that's the same, I mean, this one here is upgrades, uh, well, then you got the server, so that's twenty-three grand. So I don't know, maybe, maybe whatever they're doing now, completely different setup, I don't know, maybe that works out to be cheaper or better than what we're doing here. If we have twenty-three grand between the server and the upgrades.
So perhaps we could hold on those couple and do a little research to see if we could get more bang for our buck with, with that. Um, but I'm of the mind, we, listen, we've been talking about the budgeting software. We've been talking about what the city needs to, to move from Excel to, to something that is functional. Um, the cloud backup, I mean, that's imminent. Any agency can tell you what happens when that's, um, the wireless points. And then honestly, the exchange server, I don't think we have any option on that one.
Right.
Um.
And then the other thing I wanted to touch on is, we, so we don't have, uh, any fund or anything like that for continuous maintenance or improvements and, I mean, because you're talking about something that, it does get cheaper. It, it gets more and more costly each generational computer that comes out, right? So if that's the case, maybe it's time to look at some type of fund or create some type of fund where we put X amount of dollars into, and it's used strictly for these types of upgrades and stuff like that, something that, uh, requires council approval to, to get going. But at least the money would be there, similar to the ambulance fund or some of these other funds that we have, because this isn't gonna go away. Uh, as soon as I heard about, well, as soon as I noticed the email thing, I, I knew this would be something involved with server. As soon as you start talking about upgrading this, now you're talking about upgrading software, then the laptops, it's just dominoes, and it, it just gets more and more costly. Uh, a lot of it's unavoidable. And then on top of that, we need this budgeting software. We absolutely need it, uh, for, for obvious reasons. So I think that's something the council should consider and, uh, something we should look into here in the near future before the next budget, that way it's already in place.
Cause everything with taking out those two items is a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-one.
Which two?
Taking out, so that that gives them time with the security camera server and the security camera upgrades to take a look and see, you know, if there's something that maybe, that Wellsville has done in terms of theirs that would, um, get us more bang for our buck. So, so reasonable to look into that and, and see?
We can go in Wellsville and see what they have. You know, honestly, that, the camera software that we have right now for reviewing, it's, it's a little clunky, so. I don't, well, probably I don't have the music, I feel bad for the industry, they actually give a description on it, it's.
Yeah, give, give mind, we're, we're mandated by law on discovery to get this stuff out in a timely manner, and if we can't do that, we violate, you know, it causes problems in court, so that server's important.
So is there the potential though, that if we went with something else, that we would need a different server, so that we should wait to make sure that they tie in together?
But we, we definitely need a server regardless, this, like I said, the server we have now, it, I would doubt their software, we're probably even looking at it.
So can you come back to us with two weeks to, to let us know, having looked into, um, Wellsville, see, see that? And if it, if it seems like it's longer, then just bring us back the server component?
I can, I can check into that.
That? So that, that only puts us out two weeks?
What number did you get?
I got a hundred and, well, what I did is I, a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-one, twenty-five one forty-one. Well, sixty-five thousand, cause Len said he put seventy in, but it's like sixty-five, so I actually used the sixty-five number. So it could be a hundred and twenty thousand, so we could put a hundred and twenty thousand. And then, right, cause you thought it was more like sixty-five? Okay.
And that was for on the top of Len's, is that twenty-five one forty-one line, right?
Yes.
And then the ten thousand, the security camera server?
That, no, that was kinda saying, let's take those first two items, look and see what Wellsville has.
Okay, put on that twenty-three K.
And then revisit that, that in two weeks.
Okay, so two, so that is it, is the security camera together? Okay, so two, so that is the security camera together.
Yes, yes, and then let's revisit that in two weeks.
And then the?
The budgeting software, the server backup, and then the wireless access points.
Maybe this is a lot of, I'm obsessed with it, but with Wellsville, if they're bringing in their own stuff, like equipment and everything else, they might not trust what we have, so they might have to rerun new lines for everything, too, so it might be a little bit more upfront cost with some of that stuff, too, just like, listen, I don't know what the initial cost was when we first put the cameras in, but I knew they'd be, that's some kind of discount, because basically, they're just replacing cameras, they're not replacing the lines. I'd almost guaranteed that Wellsville's company would come in and say, you know, and I gotta trust the lines that someone else put in, you know, so many years ago.
Well, I mean, I don't blame them, but I mean, it's kind of too bold, I'm looking at the fact that if if Wellsville started at ground zero, and there was thirty, forty grand, then they paid that for the whole entire package, which is fine, yank out what we have, put in the whole new package for that amount, and now we're brand new with wire, equipment, the whole nine yards, and there may be warranty and so forth, some type of customer service, stuff, stuff like that. But if we continue on with what we have, are we just gonna end up upgrading it again? Is the wiring in there now that was put in there how many years ago, is this system?
Twenty seventeen.
This system is is over a decade old, I'm pretty sure that wiring probably isn't any good anyway, you know, because there's faster wire out there. So that's where I I started thinking, you know, maybe it is, if 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 we're gonna bleed, we might as well just slice it and just gash, and just go ahead and upgrade the thing and just put in new, and and at least, if if there's a way of getting more efficiency out of it at least, then, you know, pay a little bit more, and that helps us down the road later. That's just my thought process.
I I agree with you, I just get hard to throw it out there, I don't know how many cameras they have, but it could be a little bit high.
We have twelve or eleven, no, they're eleven years old, you have twelve of them? Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's the wireless devices.
Well, we have twenty analog written out, but we also have, I believe it's eight to ten digital cameras right now. So depending on how many software, maybe replacing those.
Oliver Benyon.
Bill, do you know what the, what did the city say they can just do with, or how do they do all their camera stuff? They just do all that cameras?
I'm not sure, I remember hearing about it, I'm not sure.
They put cameras all over the place down there.
The new rabbit?
There's cameras, there's cameras everywhere down there, like in parks and stuff, that they're actively monitoring.
Because maybe we can kind of package together.
I just hear, see, that was like something.
Sixty-five thousand, four oh nine.
Sixty-five, four oh nine.
Is that the budgeting software?
Okay.
That's um, twenty thou- twenty thousand, four oh nine annually, and forty-five thousand to get the program money initially. One-time cost of forty-five thousand.
So wait, so does that sixty-five, four oh nine cover everything? So that would give us one hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty, sound right?
Yeah, I just had that.
Okay.
I had the camera server included.
Yeah, so if we said one twenty to make sure we stayed under that, in case there was on it, on things that we didn't, because I don't see anything on here that isn't urgent.
Right.
I mean, the city has to operate, we need to be able to have the resources, Len's in his office does, to be able to to, for the budgeting and stuff. Okay, so if we're gonna say like a hundred and twenty, just to make sure that it it covers everything, are we talking about it coming out of? Did you, did you have thoughts here?
No, I I have some information behind.
Okay.
Keep keep in mind, because this is probably something to be fun, our three budgets.
Okay. Do we have monies available in line items? Okay.
About a fund balance of each, or contingency, or.
Contingency?
We can look at, yeah, well, I think we would do is say, okay, we'd have to run the numbers and say, okay, how many employees do we have? On water, on the.
Kind of like we've done.
Yeah, like we've done.
Yeah.
You're just gonna apply it, unfortunately.
Yeah, absolutely, and I I think that makes so much more sense to the budget, and you guys have begun to do that, and it's a more effective way of of putting it, so, yeah.
I'm perfectly fine with that, and it going into a capital fund where it has a balance, and then maybe later down the road, we set up something where we could have funds go into that account to for rainy day.
We don't have one, one, we're budget one eighty, that's IT upgrade capital fund, we just don't put money into it, is there? I think there's like sixty bucks in there right now, I think.
Sixty dollars?
Not much, I think so. You said we run a big budget down here.
Maybe a little too tight, so. So do we need to port in the P L for these?
Ninety-one dollars.
Ninety-one dollars, okay.
Okay, if you're, the camera server, the issues that the police are having to to use, correct?
This by two weeks, can come back and hopefully have the information.
So in terms of a P L, do you want to wait two weeks to know more about the cameras? Or do you want right now to transfer a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to one of Jerry's line items for all of us?
Yeah, probably put in capital, put in one eighty instead of the line items, because if we don't use it, it was probably, we could use it later.
Capital fund number one eighty. Do you want to do the hundred and twenty to capital fund one eighty?
Yes.
For I T upgrade?
And then revisit in two weeks in short order, then the server and the cameras. Because we want to be able to get, everybody needs to be able to get off for discovery.
So if you just, just thought if you just put that at one twenty-five, with a little bit extra that you put there and some savings, that would potentially cover at least the camera server upgrade, that then if things come in higher and you want to pull that out, then that would just leave a balance in that capital fund.
So you said one twenty-five?
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five would at least cover that, if all the numbers come in back, you add a couple of extra thousand bucks there, if there's some other.
And we're gonna break it between the fund balances?
That's up.
What was the question?
How, you're you're gonna decide on and break it up?
Yes, the system's gonna decide and break it up evenly between the the three balances.
Based on proportion.
Okay, yeah, we'll talk about that tomorrow and.
Yes.
So can you just repeat for me, I know we're doing the.
So under I T number one?
Here, it should be all except.
Number one, I T we're doing.
Yep.
All.
And number two, everything except for the first two right now, but we're gonna revisit the first two, which is the security camera and the upgrade in two weeks. So we'll put a hundred and twenty-five thousand in there, because then if we determine that we at least need to go for the server and wait on the others, there should be enough in there. Does that sound reasonable?
One, two, four, eight, six. You don't have that number, no. No, you don't have, when I was matching between what Lenus gave us and what Jerry gave us, I put numbers on that matching. One, one, five.
Yeah.
All of us.
But.
We have elevators and downstairs, seven minutes.
Sorry, on this one.
ADA compliance. Somebody.
So we're just, yeah, that's what the exact.
How about servers in a different way?
Okay, you got what you need?
Yes, we're interested for one twenty-five K and the capital fund one eighty, and in two weeks, we're gonna call off on security cameras and servers.
Yes, yes, perfect. Okay, then next we have D P W with the elevator.
It's twenty grand.
So the elevator is still out of service, and obviously, we're in a public building with ADA requirements, so we need to fix that. We do have offices on all three levels in this building that occasionally have visits from the public. Most of it, obviously, is on the first floor, but like the D P W is on the second floor. We had some guidance, actually started before I came, so I don't know how back it, far back it goes, I think it goes back almost a year, that the full renovation of the elevator would be about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So I have written an R F P, and actually, we put that on the street today through the New York State Contract Reporter that asked for a full renovation of that elevator. And Len, I think we put it in at two hundred thousand. Obviously, I don't have bids yet, but I'm just expecting some escalation from a year ago.
So is there any potential outside resources, grants or anything for like an elevator for ADA or anything?
Not not that I know off the top of my head.
So where do you plan on getting this money from, surplus to?
Fake sale.
Maybe an escalator would be cheaper.
Well, I mean, there there are some things that quite honestly, nobody, I I think that we have been working to try to move towards let's have, let's be planful and and try to allocate some dollars even within a very tight budget to be able to do some of these things, but we haven't quite gotten there, and who would've thought the elevator would break down and need a whole new renovation? So I think on this one, we're just holding, waiting for the R F P, and then we need to revisit that, so when are R F Ps due back?
I believe it's twenty-fifth of September.
Okay, so we should put this on for our first meeting then in October? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
So right now, the money's not coming from anywhere, until we figure it out, and hopefully, it's not more than we thought. Okay, next, John Deere mower.
Are you looking for two more?
And this had come before, and we had put it on hold, if I remember. Um, the mayor had worked with us, said we could kind of hold on that, because that came out of Fleet recommendation or something, I think a while ago.
Yeah, it's been a while. I don't know, do you want to talk about that?
So the the city parks crew, we have two wide-area motor mowers, um, which are the the big units that do approximately eleven feet of cut. Um, one of them has been out of service now for, I'm gonna say at least a month, maybe a little more than that. The other one is actually the same age, so I think, I think they were bought together as a pair. So they are both in, you know, the one is frankly not worth fixing at this point. Um, and the other one, although it is still operable, is clearly at the end of its useful life. So we received this quote for two new ones, and we're asking to replace the two of them.
To me, this, I have no problem replacing monowers, but this seems like it should have been in the budget. We just, we just went through the budget process, I'm not blaming anybody here, but this is a budget item. It's September, pretty soon, we're gonna be having snow, grass isn't growing, this should be placed in next year's budget and go through the budget process. I don't, I don't consider this an emergency at this time, in this time of year.
Oliver Benyon.
I mean, the only problem with that is you got two more months of mowing, your next budget will start till June, June one or June first, you start mowing April fifteenth, so you've got pretty much four months worth of mowing. I mean, I know that I've read this on the Fleet Meeting Minutes again and again, and if I remember correctly, that this this also, didn't, they say that there was not really any, anything for trade on the two now, right? Didn't didn't it say in their quote somewhere, Ray, I think is his name, said pretty much nothing?
The trade has gone down considerably. Um, the first time we priced a pair, which was, I think, at the end of last year, they were worth about twenty thousand apiece. Now they're down to maybe nine. Um, and actually, on the final quote, they manipulated the trade because of cost escalations that have hit the pricey due to tariffs. And, you know, their corporate headquarters have said, you can't just discount the price, but you can play with the trade-ins. So that's what they did.
And this price includes the trade-in, is it Jameson?
Yes, I think that's the, it's the one sixty-something.
Yeah, one sixty-five.
Yeah, so that's the price for two of them, taking into account the trade-ins.
I mean, I guess if they were saying that, so I could see the the need for one, trying to find the funding for one right now, and then maybe getting the one budget, they are pretty expensive, then maybe that would put them on off off years rather than try to replace two at a time, because what's the status of your? You got the, what do you got, Ventraks down there and some?
We have some Ventraks, and then the current wide-area motors are, mowers are John Deeres. And this bid is for Kubodas, I think.
Well, what's the status on the Ventraks, the condition?
Of the John Deeres?
No, the Ventraks, that you also use for mowing.
Yeah, the Ventraks, we've, they had one that they've had some problem with this year, but they seem to be a little more robust, if you will. So I have not received any requests to replace a Ventrak at this time.
The Ventrak and the two wide areas are what you pretty much use for all of your mowing needs, correct?
Yes.
I I would be of the mind, too, to look to do one and then put the other into the budget year. Um, but I know that's affected, because early on, we talked about mowing, and you'd indicated that that these being down affected the frequency of mowing and such. Oliver Benyon.
Um, I feel the same, uh, you know, this this has been on the minutes for a better part of a year, year and a half. And we knew it was gonna get to this point, I do recall us kicking the can down the road when these had a better return in the trade, uh, but at the time, it just wasn't feasible, it just wasn't the right time. Now we're at a point where we're similar to some of the other things that we need to get done, it it needs to get, something needs to happen. Uh, so with that, I I'm, I can agree with purchasing one, that way we have it, uh, but I would prefer that we offset the years by at least two years if possible. Yeah, instead of one year, try to offset it by two years, if if we can trade in, I don't know, the junk one for whatever we can get for it, and then the one that still works, run it until it dies, and then that forces the council's hand to purchase the second one. But if we could run it, try to maintain the maintenance on it, try to maybe give it grass jobs where it doesn't have to cut as hard, you know, cutting the wet grass and so forth, but but get one that way, uh, just get in the habit of trying to offset our assets, so we're not coming out with one big bang every time, because it it is hurting us uh, all at one time, so, yeah, I'm for getting one and offsetting.
So.
We'll take one.
Do you have, I mean, is there any money in the budget at all for any of that piece? No.
Well, we renamed it to, uh.
Wait, wait.
He wanted to rename it.
I'm putting a dumb ball light on it.
Okay, so we're going to say we're looking to take it out of, do you have contingency money left in there, or would that wipe it out?
Contingency, I think we have seventy-eight thousand dollars left in contingency.
I know about that, it sold early in the, we're nearly halfway through the year.
No, we'll have it sold early in the, we're nearly halfway through the year. Yeah, I, I'm just, if our budget gets out right now.
I mean, the reality is if it comes out there, the, the rest of the stuff's just coming back to us anyways, right? But, yeah. So, okay, so we're looking to take it out of our, um, fund balance?
Is that something else that can be divided up amongst the departments considering it's used at parks, it's used by the plants?
Uh, it's not used at the plants, we have, they have their own.
They have it on the mowers, right?
But we can take a look at that, we can, we can see where, uh, yeah, I, I don't think we can take that a third or third, because they have their own mowers that they do. They do their own, all the, the pump houses and that, they do all that themselves, so.
Is it illegal to say, can we reallocate those that work over to DPW? That way we can do a third?
We didn't hear that.
We reserve the right.
Okay. Or we could re, or can you trade the?
Trade assets departmentally? They have smaller mowers.
They have smaller mowers?
Sorry.
Oh. So we'll put in a PL, is what I'm hearing, for one and the mayor will, will let us know where we're gonna pull that from. Okay? Okay, we are, we're clearing it. Okay, F, F, okay, go ahead, rear lot.
Simon.
Yes. Tiffany, what?
Well, I just know that.
I would say, I don't know if they have a capital fund, but.
Yeah, they said they got ninety-one lots, so it's just moving to that capital fund, right?
No, that's the.
No, ninety-one is the IT.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Usually, usually. I mean, usually we would.
Thank you, that will box Jerry.
Okay, Lance, what, usually?
So usually, we would do capital budget one or two for vehicle replacements. I don't know if that's considered a vehicle or a mower.
It's under fleets?
It's on a hundred and sixty-five thousand in the vehicle and it does come under fleet in the meetings.
Well, and we're, but we're gonna go with eighty-two. Yeah, so I would say it, it falls under the fleet management, so.
Well, we gotta put money into the fleet.
Right, yeah.
So that's where, yeah, we put money from the, over the fund balance into the fleet to cover it.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Okay, actually, I skipped ahead. We're at Bartlett House Roof Repair Project. I thought we just did that.
No, I think last year, the council transferred forty-four thousand three sixty into the Bartlett House. But I don't think that was nearly enough.
I thought it was gonna be like sixty-five or something.
It was for a wall and roof, I thought.
Yeah.
I thought we covered, I thought we transferred enough to cover the those, those jobs. Part of the bits.
Okay, Tiffany.
Oh, no, the mayor was. Mayor.
Go ahead, Tiffany.
Um, we actually applied for grants. Instead of just fixing the roof, we were gonna completely replace the roof.
Right.
And we received grant funding, but I believe when bids came in, they were still short.
Okay.
Thirty-six-five.
Mayor, did you have something to add to that? Sorry.
No, that's what I was gonna say. We received grant funding for this from historical preservation. But we're, we're short thirty-six-five to complete the job. Bids came in.
So the total cost to the roof then was?
Does this have to be done now?
Or is this something we owe?
It has to be done soon. Speaking with Chris Schurey, you know, if it happens this fall, that would be nice. If it happens next spring, that's probably okay also.
I'm only asking because I personally like to revisit the discussion topics that were had. Because I remember this talk about during capital fund, that that was, Chris had mentioned a very low number. But then there were some bids that were gotten and I, I don't remember the grant, I just remember saying like that we would move that amount over. So if it could be delayed at least two weeks, I'd at least like to revisit that.
That's right.
Yeah.
Can you dig that stuff up?
Today I found a big package of information about the roof. I haven't had time to go through it. Cause it's on my list to write an RFP to go get, so maybe it's already written.
Yeah, I heard this talk about it and it was a rather low number that we talked about, like repairing and then, because we had conversations and then bids came in and it was a much larger number. I remember there was conversation.
And then also, I guess, how much time do we have for the grant? Is there an expiration on that? Yeah, because we don't want to lose that. So can we put this on for two weeks and we'll revisit it?
Yeah, whatever they, right, I don't know if we call that.
Yeah, Tiffany, uh, PL one dash twenty-five has to do with the Bartlett House. And eleven dash twenty-five was the professional services.
Oh, yes. I don't think we did the RFP for the actual roof replacement. But based on the estimate for the engineer, it's gonna cover it for me, but I can, I'll get all those minutes here.
Yeah, that one dash twenty-five was for the type two that we do in Bartlett.
Okay, now we're on to the rear lot. Coda Force, you, now you're on.
Okay, um, I think it was two thousand nineteen or twenty. Building was demolished. Went to the county behind station one. The city acquired that vacant lot and had to put a parking lot in behind the fire station. So the fire station sits on South First Street, the vacant lot is on South Second Street. We have not really done anything with that lot since. So I have had conversations with the previous two DPW directors about coming up with estimates for, for, uh, for what that would take to put in some type of a parking lot there for us. We did, uh, we did, um, just acquire some fencing from the Marcus Park project that they, they removed the fencing, so we brought the fencing there. So the idea is we'd like to fence in about half of that lot and put a parking lot inside the fence. And then have a concrete apron from basically the, the gate of the fence to the road. And then inside the fenced area will be just, just millings for us to park on. I don't have a specific number. I guess we're kind of gauging your interest in this. I mean, we've had this lot and done nothing with it for four or five years now. I'd kind of like to do something.
So is there money in your budget anywhere for it?
No.
Is this, uh, your seventy-five hundred, is that just a guesstimate? Down here, what's that?
Seventy-five hundred is for, um, for a roll gate. So we have the fence for Marcus, but we need to put a gate on it. So roll gate, um, done by, the last time I put an RFP out for, for a six-foot chain link fence roll gate was about seven thousand dollars each.
So would that mean the total project is twenty-seven-five or twenty-thousand?
We, we really never got a solid estimate.
I haven't got to the point where I crunched any numbers on it.
Okay. I think maybe our taste for it would depend on cost. Might be. What are you gonna say?
I was just gonna ask if that could be done.
In-house?
In-house.
Um, I would hope so, but I would mind a conversation with a couple of my supervisors before I, I promise that. It, it certainly sounds like the type of work that we should be able to accomplish in-house. We have the millings, as Eric said, we have the fencing. Although I might still contract out a fence contractor to pop that up because they are just so good at it. But we should be able to strip that lot, place the millings. And then we do have, almost in the field, our annual contractor who's doing sidewalks and curbs. Who could probably do the apron for us under that, you know, change order to that contract. And that's a contract we get every year. So if there's some delay, you know, we, we could take care of that. So I do think there's a substantial amount of it we could do in-house.
And you're looking for a manual, just a roll gate is what you're?
Um, I don't know enough about it to tell you the truth.
Oh, I don't know to tell you that if you want an electric one, you can buy a hundred box. And then my question is, if you want a manual one, you're telling me that you guys are gonna open and close it after every time you come through, then why waste the money and put a gate on it?
It would just be a shift change. So in the morning for shift change, they'd open it. The oncoming crew would pull their vehicles in. And then in the afternoon, when they shift change again, they would open it again. There wasn't talk about storing one or maybe two of our trailers back there to our trailers, so.
Cause I remember that part of the conversation when you came during capital project stuff, you talked about storing stuff back there. Why would we necessarily need to lock it?
To lock it.
Uh, I'm not, I'm sorry, not lock it, but put a gate on there. If it's closed in, I'm assuming the back of the parking lot is gonna have a wall or a back and that you have the two sides. As long as you close in the front enough to where you just have an apron where you go in and out. Why would you feel that you need to close up the gate? I mean.
Cause somebody's there twenty-four seven.
Right, someone's always there. I mean, I don't like to talk about work on camera much, but I mean, even our employees don't have a gate on our parking lot. Our parking lot is open. Those guys all have six-figure trucks. No one's down there messing with their vehicles and it's down there. Say again?
It's just chick-stick.
Yeah, I mean, well, I parked mine inside, it's the company vehicles. But I have two six-figure trucks. Yeah, yeah.
So the city was looking for some trucks, so.
So, I mean, there's some down there, come get them burned. No, these are privately owned, these aren't company vehicles. But my point is that they're, they're privately owned vehicles, they're in an open lot, uh, you know.
Would we need to necessarily incur that expense?
Yes, thank you. Good way of putting it.
So.
Let Jim put some, excuse me, let, let Jim put some figures together. We'll see, come back and more, bring the figures and go from there.
Some that involve more city assistance.
So what do you want, a month, six weeks? What would you, I know we've given you a lot and you have, you have met the task each time, I wanna say. Well.
This one I, I think is important, so let's, uh, let's do this one in a month.
Okay, so we'll put it back on for four weeks and revisit. That gives you time to think about, do we need to enclose it with a, you know, electric zapping gate or no?
Will that hurt with the contractor as far as having given them enough time, considering the weather, the window is closing? You know what I mean? If, if, if by possibility we decide, hey, we're gonna go forward with this, will they be able to get all of that? I mean, millings could be laid at any point with the concrete and so forth, would that?
And it's only the first of September. We have potentially as much as three months.
Okay.
You know?
I just drive over stuff.
Just checking it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll put that on for, we said one month. Okay. We're grinding down. Last thing under our capital project discussion is kennels project. Oh, wait, where, I forgot, there's another page.
No, no, we just, we skipped, um, code enforcement cleanup fund.
Oh, sorry.
Well, he, the chief is looking to create a capital project for the cleanup fund.
Yes.
For codes.
Uh, yeah, so right now we have, um, a lot of expense line in the code enforcement budget. That we pay contractors to go clean up properties out of. We budgeted thirty thousand dollars and we're already overspent. There's a lot of things to do, yards and all, et cetera. Now we get all this money back, okay? So the revenue comes back in the revenue line, um, which we budgeted ten thousand dollars for. Currently, we've already received back fourteen thousand dollars. So again, we get all of this money back, but we don't necessarily get it back right now. So in March, we are due to get forty-five thousand dollars in liens. But those liens are from two thousand twenty-three. So that revenue line is always trying to play catch-up from like a couple of years ago. So rather than trying to keep this all straight as we try to close out the budget years, I've talked with Lance and I've talked with the mayor in codes. Creating a capital fund for this money to just go into and come out of might be simpler. Theoretically, because we charge administrative fees and the county always makes this hole on our means. We should build money and it shouldn't start to accrue over a couple of years.
I, I think that makes sense because then it's clear where it's going into.
I think we talked about this during the budget, that the revenues should be going somewhere else and not back into this, we did.
Yes, right now, yeah, we did. Right now, it's, it's going to a revenue line instead of going back to the expenditure line.
Right, we talked about, then it should go back in to kind of create that cycle he's talking about, yeah. So you're not asking for more money, you're just wanna keep upgrading that and move that stuff there, correct?
I'm, I'm not asking for more money tonight, however, if, if you do the math, it doesn't leave us much money to, to continue doing the cleanup. So I might have to come back for, for a little seed money.
The math isn't happening. Okay, so let's create the PL. So we'll call it code enforcement cleanup fund. Okay, and then any of the liens, et cetera, that were made whole on, we'll go directly into that. Agreed?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Now the question though, is it just the all liens or just the one we get from the county in March? Is it all lien?
Just the ones that we paid for out of the, for the cleanups. So if the property has a lien on it for water.
For water, right, because we've talked about the water before and that going into that separate fund. So we've had that conversation.
It should just be what's associated with the cleanup.
Yes. So it's some bookkeeping and that's where that software may well help.
Which is also the, the mowing and all haulouts, correct? Garbage haulouts, mowings, property, general cleanup?
Yep.
Okay.
And then that, but going back to when you bought up a house and then you placed it back, would go into a different, right, that lien?
Um, that is currently paid out of that same expense line.
Okay.
I don't know how often we get paid back for the floor jobs.
For example, you bought a house recently on Front Street. And then they, you file a bill, that bill doesn't get paid, that goes to a lien.
Yep.
When that's made whole, that would come back to this one because it would come out of that one, correct?
So basically, everything except for the water.
Water and store.
Store. Sounds like a plan, huh? Good idea. Now kennel project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, this one, we're looking for, I spoke with Kerry, um, last week. For thirty-four thousand six twenty. This number is like concrete number just yet because we, there's a grant available, I think. Um, the number could be lower. It's not a hundred percent that I'm always gonna.
Yeah, we're, uh, town of Oland, town of Hinsdale, town of Allegheny, city of Oland. Applied for a grant to build a, a better kennel out, out in the town of Oland property. We talked about this before and that they were successful in getting a, a five hundred thousand dollar grant. So, uh, this was, uh, gonna be the match money that each community would pay. So, but that, that, now that we've got the grant, this figure could, uh, could change, so.
How much was the grant?
Five hundred thousand. Five hundred thousand.
And again, this is something that the mayor has brought up, that we've been talking about a long time, trying to put together that collaborative effort so that the cost was not all on city residents, so that's great to see, and that's for the building of the new kennel, right? Excellent. So, we should revisit this and?
The, uh, the grant was just awarded, we're waiting for the contracts and that, so as soon as I have more information, once all this, I will come back to the council.
Perfect.
How long are we waiting on this one? I think we're just gonna get, whoever gets the information back, because I have time too.
I think that's all I have. No more.
Is there anything we need to?
Those are just information, your fund balance?
Yep.
And, and your contingency accounts.
Okay. Any questions on the fund balance, the contingency account?
No, thank you, Lance, for that. It's good to have a, a, to look at what those balances are from time to time, your pressure numbers.
Okay. All right, committee reports, none. I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Was that you, Alderman Benyon, already? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So be it.
Jesus.
I know, I'm sorry. Um, I'll go fast. Uh, caller, the, uh, committee of strategic planning, Tuesday, September second, eight, ten. Please note, all Aldermen are present with the exception of Alderman Crawford and, yeah. Um, approval of the minutes of previous committee, Tuesday, August twenty sixth. Uh, so, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, second.
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, on our unfinished business, we have the city garage's long term strategic plan, um, RFP update.
So I have been working on this RFP. Uh, I have located the city garage needs assessment that was actually written by Bob Ring, so it was backed a couple of directors. And I have received um, some really good guidance from one of the consulting firms with some example RFPs for this type of initial work that we're talking about doing here. So I think I can marry the two of those together and have an RFP ready to go. Hopefully, it won't be the end of this week, it'll be next week. I will probably provide that to everyone before we publish it. Because I'm gonna have to write this RFP, or I'm going to write the RFP to start with the existing needs assessment, update it, and then do a certain amount of preliminary work. And I'm gonna have to draw a stopping point, if you will, that, you know, okay, out of the box, we're only gonna go this far. But I really think that the selection process needs to be uh, robust because the hope would be that we keep going past the preliminary work, and we don't wanna change horses in the middle of a project. So really, although this selection process, the money and, or the project that we would be committing to initially is just the preliminary work, my hope would be that we're selecting a consulting team to take us all the way through site selection, design, whatever comes next. So, it's, it's more, it's a more complicated, I think, or it should be a more complicated consultant selection process than just this initial piece of work might warrant. So that's where I'm at. Uh, I think I've dredged up all the pieces I need to work with, and I can start knitting them together into coherent documents.
And how long will you keep the RFP open for?
I, when we publish it, I think we'll probably publish it for a month. You know, it's gonna be, although this initial work is not a huge number, and in fact, I may have a problem, I'd really like to put it on Contract Reporter, but they have a fifty thousand dollar minimum, and this is targeted at something less than thirty. Up to see if we can play with the numbers there a little bit. Cause we really hope, you know, to spread it around in the marketplace. It's a big enough job, it's a multi-year job, obviously, uh, um, the amount of work that needs to be done, and obviously, the amount of financial arrangements the city would need to make to pursue this all the way. So hopefully, we can get a lot of interest from a lot of different consultants.
So we can revisit this in October, when you get some bids back? I don't, I don't know when.
Yeah, I, I would say the next time you see it would be by email. So that I can at least get some direction from the administration and from the council that where I drew that stopping point is what you were all understood in the previous conversations.
No, we can just wait until.
Wait till the mayor. Yeah, okay, so then we'll just go from there. Okay. Sounds good. Any questions? All right. Thank you, I appreciate the update. Um, so new referrals for consideration, none. Committee reports, none. Motion to adjourn. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No post.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.
Well done.